...have a prayer and a question, then we'll have a play.
I pray. Father in heaven, I thank you so much for your blessing and provision for each one of us in our personal family, but as well for the city. I pray God that you continue to guide and direct not only each citizen, but each member of the city council. Father, that your perfect will be accomplished for the city of Ridgeline, and that it would be a shining example to those communities around us of a city who looks to you for their guidance. I pray for wisdom for each of the city council members this evening, and a spirit of patience, that they would work well together in according to your will. Pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mayor Henn.
Here.
Alderman Reason.
Here.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Alderman Harris.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Everybody in the chamber, the regular city meeting of February 16, 2016, minutes. I'm making a motion to stop the regular city meeting, minutes, February 16, 2016, I hear a second. I'll say. I was ever saying, Mr. Reports, I want to start off with the utility.
I want to go back to the minutes of replacing this little meter from last month. I met with ADS yesterday? Yeah, yesterday. Number up there, what it is, is basically a signaling device that's going to, our phone meter and everything's going to stay there. I was there doing the add and something to where it's a specific meter to actually send a signal of what our flows are on a daily basis, an hourly basis, to Metro. And that's all it is. Metro, if there's flows, put the whole bill for the entire thing. The only thing we have to provide is an outlet.
What about the monthly services?
Monthly services, all, Metro's covering all monthly services.
Really?
Yeah.
That's best we can get out there.
Utility department, there were pretty couple of broken seams at fire in our park, and the mayor go around the park. We had a couple of gas leaks that we're taking care of. Several of them, matter of fact, I'm not going to go down the list here. And we had three supercars. I said, come, we put it, did my, and I had ten cutoffs, gas cutoffs. Other than that, that's it.
It's going to finance, Alderman Johnson.
All the accounts are going really well, as far as budget or line items. We're only at fifty percent revenue in the gas utility. So, I mean, we're starting terms in warm weather, so we're probably coming up a little short on our budget in gas. Another budget I hadn't had time to give Kelly about is the signal guard as far as revenue in the police department. It's probably fairly close, but it's probably down a little bit as well. I'll have a report on that next month.
It's going to parks, Alderman Reason.
We've got our Easter egg hunt this Sunday, 2:00 p.m., Ridgeline Station Park. Other than that, we're just gearing up for the winter season, so.
I want to just let you know, I touched, he's been down, we did get all the water back on there, the parking, got the rest of the parking stuff for the little get-together for Sunday. It's all last weekend.
I don't have anything personally. I'm going to place the fire, Vice Mayor Anderson.
I ask interim chief Brian Morris to maybe get the police report.
I was going to ask you about the water at the parks. We haven't been unlocking the bathrooms, but guess it's back on now, so.
We're not going to unlock the bathrooms until Sunday. Sunday will be the first day.
Right. Citations are close to what they were. They're a little up from last month, as you can see. Violations are up as well. Everything's going back up, which I think will see come, you know, when we get back fully staffed, everything will probably go back up to better than it's ever been. But we did have three theft reports last month that Tomlin's been working on. There's been charges against all three of them, and all the items have been recovered, so he did a great job with that. We did install more lights on the Humvee and the gray car. And the only other thing I'm working on right now is a 2017 GHSO grant, which is due into this month for next year, so.
What's the accident, one from town, the torn down last month?
Yeah. Yeah, this report's for.
Just to add to that too, since it's part of your ALISO, last month we spent roughly, with the return of voltage reducer and the four lights that we purchased, what we spent roughly $250. And then I think another $120 today on two bolt changes for both the Humvee, so that'll come out ALISO, so roughly $370 come out of ALISO as well.
Well, we also had a little reminder yesterday from Miss, well, actually Doctor No- No Teneus about the safe route to school. We still have $4,580 that we can spend before September 25th, so we need to find a way to spend that money because it's available to us.
We can, if you want, we can purchase two of the portable trailers that do the speed limit, that flash the signs there. $2,500 apiece.
Why don't you put it together, maybe a little proposal to us. We've got a little time, and to see if there's anything that'd be better suited to the safe route to school. I agree, that would be something good. It would remind people to slow down. When you see your speed, you're very conscious of it.
It records the traffic flow and the speeds of all the cars that pass it on a daily basis too. And it will record, if you can download that data.
We might need to look at that grant. I think that money is appropriated for certain hours already.
I don't know. I don't have that grant paperwork.
Yeah, I think we need to look back. I think that money's appropriated for some materials for accidentally the kids at the school.
I think it even includes some education materials that you can give the children and stuff like that. And so that's why I was saying, put together a report, so we have time to think about it or whatever. So, I don't have a prior report.
Let's go back to Alderman Harris, the plan.
We have no report for last month, any last month, we have a lot going on this month. So you'll have another big stack of timber over there for next month.
You got the last, have a plan, or all the stores and silos, and they're talking about building there. That's an N of 257, or whatever, Ridge Town, Ridge Town. Going to the business report, city report.
I'd like to thank everyone who helped with the census data. We have completed that information, had it audited with 2,054 people in the city of Ridgeline. I will begin work on the budget in the next month, so we'll be geared up for budget preparation and a workshop here soon.
All right, so old business ordinance 2016, 102, gas power motorized bikes, noise ordinance. This is. We already had one reading on this last month. This will be the second final reading. I've been about once a copy, but I love to give one. It's ordinance regulating the use of gas powered motorized sports bikes included in our PMP, all-terrain dirt bikes, motorcycles, and go-karts. But then to Ridgeline, because of regular scheduling, duty notice meter does order any faster following, as much as I can. We've all discussed this last month. I think Brian had said that that's about as good as he thought we could get. Was it John, make any changes on that last week?
Yeah, we discussed a little bit, and I'm going to make the motion, but we kind of told this one on the bus, to all of them. Complaints and everything, we've been getting as far as restrictions on properties and everything else. I have a couple of noise ordinances, or not, yeah, normal ordinance is here. This deals specifically with noise and noise only.
So revamping the ordinance?
I'd like to, yeah, yeah, I'd like to put this on the table for next month, and so we can go and revamp this ordinance.
Okay.
And reword it to, taking out all the restrictions of what you can and cannot do.
So you've got a motion on the table, revamp. I'll say. All in favor, say aye. It's going to new business, the MS Building.
We have, our city engineer has finished the plans. They will go up for bid. I think, I don't think we can get them in this, this week, probably next week. Like to make a motion that if all bids come back over the predicted number, that the city will come to contract. We actually begin the work. That way if there's nothing else holding us back from stopping, starting the work, if all the bids come back over our predicted number.
What is our projected number?
Roughly $100,000.
Motion on the table.
I'll say.
Book all votes, please.
Alderman Reason.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Mayor Henn.
I'll stand.
Then you have to vote, it's my personal business. Yes or no?
I can, I'll stand if I want, but I'll stand out.
Alderman Harris.
Yes.
And Alderman Johnson.
All right, it's going to next new order business. Police Chief position.
Well, this is the end of the three month period. We had established as a time limit, and it's time to make a decision on our police chief. So, if I can make a motion, I'll make the motion that we go ahead and have Brian Morris become our police chief.
I'll say. I wrote all of that, ask for points.
Are we going to discuss any figures, do you think?
Well, I don't know, to do that next. I mean, what I'm saying is, should it be, number one, we know we want a police chief. Then we need to, I think, discuss the numbers. What do you think? Do we need to have it all in the motion?
Well, we had a discussion last night. You already had one, you already had something with that, almost like what Tom just said.
Why don't you make the motion?
Okay. And this is per our discussion last night. I'd like to make the motion to promote Brian Morris to full-time police chief of City of Ridgeline at a rate of $19 per hour. All except in this position, would like Chief Morris to present an assistant chief to this board at the April meeting. If he can come back to us with an assistant chief motion.
I'll say.
I'll say.
Can we have discussion? Are we going to vote for it?
We got, oh, you got three being voted. How did you vote on that?
I think Tom's got a question.
Well, I'm just saying that the rate of pay operators need for a chief of police in our city.
It's equivalent to, Brian and I had a discussion about, you know, what a chief position should play, paying City of Ridgeline. We could have looked around. Cooper Town was a comparable city that had about the same size force that we have now, and we tried to match what they could do.
Back when we put our budget together, we're just going to wait about six months. It's been about six months. We're just going to try to get some raises going, and doesn't look right. I mean, I'm just saying that my vote is to certainly have him be the police chief, but I'm just saying, our pay is backwards.
You have a city zing charge, Brian?
Yes.
I mean, there's nothing to say, damn it, we can't make adjustments. No, you're forty-one something. You gotta look at about twenty-one hundred and eighty-four hours. That's what the police are paying. So it comes up to forty-one and some change. I mean. I hate to talk about that, but.
I don't, I don't.
I need to.
That's what this is called, in, in, in motion, a second vote.
We gotta make some corrections, I understand that, but everybody has to understand, our last few months on our budget is, it's out of whack.
I understand.
I wish I had a better number to kind of tell you where we are.
With you.
And as far as the pay raises go, I completely agree. I was all in favor of, of when Mr. Bill Ratliff was to get a raise in last December. Chief White never presented a pay plan that he was going to bring us for six months. I mean, now we, you know, we've got to get somebody new in there where he can start on a pay plan, so that we can be rid of a budget. This gives him two months, which is not a lot of time to come up with something. So we can't look at getting our officers a raise, so.
I'm ready, I'm ready, buddy.
And if I get everybody to show up, I'm going to invite the man back from passing in. He can't, he's an H, all he does is HR, and he has every bit of information on every police department in the state of Tennessee, and he will show you where we're at, and is very surprised. Where we're at, for a pay on our side.
Mayor Henn.
Yes.
Alderman Reason.
Yes.
Alderman Harris.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
And Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Now, now, once this got the, the next mark, what, what is it that, that he's coming in with?
Get him the authorization to appoint a police chief.
Assistant chief.
Assistant chief, correct. That's kind of putting a note on your ballot, isn't it?
I wish we had two. I mean.
What you got?
I mean, history is, you know, we all know the history.
Bill's done a good job, Zach's done a great job. I mean, it's a.
There's not to say anybody's not qualified to do the job. I think by this motion passing and Brian becoming our new chief, he needs to make that decision, not us, because obviously if he's not there, his next in command, I won't appoint my second in command in my absence that I trust him. So that's why I made the motion the way I did, where he can make that call.
We're all comfortable, right position? Did I appoint you coming by?
April 1st.
Glad to see you're, glad to see you around here. Any other discussion on that? All right, it's going to next order business, report, I'm a appeals member. I do not have any, wants to serve on that board. Anybody else who does, they're welcome.
I see a couple.
Would you be a race in that position, sir?
Zoning appeals? Are you?
You what? You come to a lot of meetings in your, in your racing business.
Go ahead and take it, Ken.
They don't, they don't meet very often.
Isn't Ken on the board?
Ken's already on.
Take it again. You can double take it. You get two votes for that.
I don't have a problem if I deserve that position, as well. Anybody here in August is a citizen that would like to serve on that board. I've asked three or four people, and they don't have time for it, and they really don't do it, so. We had several people get older, had a couple people move, and that board normally doesn't meet. I mean, when they met one time in the last.
Twice this last September.
That's the first time it's been that often in a long time.
I don't think anybody's buying.
Go ahead and tell them, go ahead and tell them what it pays, Carol.
It's huge money, it really does.
We can't release that age. We can't involve that.
About you, Carol, have you been a race in that position?
What position is that?
Zoning board of appeals.
I'm going to pass.
All right.
We've got a door to start with college, and lots of stuff going on.
Is there a volunteer out there? I don't know.
We got Joe.
You want to do it, Joe? Okay. I'm making a motion, Judge Morris served on that board.
I say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's go on to the zoning map of new business.
You want to cover it? Man, he's a popular engineer from OHM, the rest is the same people that does mail, so. As far as getting our map updated, you know, with all that we have done and so forth, and some of the mistakes that we've done. They have provided, we provided them with the GIS files and everything, and they have come up with an estimate of $4,200 to get it back up and running. And then, also, we're updating for future updates at a rate of $2.50 for single parcel, plus $50 per additional parcel. So if we have like five or six parcels that's a year or two years' time, whenever that updated in, we'll do for the $2.50 plus $50 for each of our parcels. That's as far as we're updating, but as far as getting it updated now, with everything that's lacking on it, it's going to be $4,200. So I'd like to ask what y'all think about.
With that amount of money, does it need to go out for, to get two more bids?
Would it be in professional service? We can send it back out for a more bid. It's not something that everybody.
It's specialized work, so it's not so.
I don't think you're supposed to get bids on professional work.
Who do you have estimate that, that, yeah, anybody estimate that? Those origin, always from the, or advanced, their architects and.
Which are your sources?
Well, it needs to be done. I don't know what the normal cost is in order to have it done. For not having it done for so long, we're probably going to be paying pretty close to the same, I would think.
The last time we redid that, 2000?
2008, yeah, it's 2008. So there's a lot that's going to be done, that's why the cost is a little high on. But from here on out.
What do we actually get for the, the actual map?
We get the map, you get all the GIS files, you get everything that's.
PDF format.
Completely corrected, we get PDF format.
That's a good price. That's a good price, Mike.
Yeah.
Am I saying their work, these things, maps that they've grown up by their cities?
Yeah, they actually do work, yeah, they're good, good maps. I've actually got a copy of some of the maps that they've done from earlier. But I'm going to go and make the motion if we go ahead and approve, oh, makes the, excuse me, OHM, I'm sorry, to go ahead and update our planning and zoning map for a rate of $4,200.
I'll say. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Our motion's carried. It's going next to the Metro Billings, we're placing, I think we've already discussed that.
Yeah.
It's going down the ordinance, 2016, 103. This is the ordinance to amend, ordinance 2014, 104, to amend the Ridgeline municipal code, Title 12 Building Utility ETC Code, chapters 1 through 7, adopting 2012 edition of International Building Codes, 2009 International Energy Conversation Code, and 2011 National Electrical Code. I think you probably know more about that in your time.
Well, this should be conservation. Conservation, conservation.
You know much about that, y'all, I tell you. Is this what we have to do, what it's for us to do here, that you brought last month, month four?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And what this ordinance covers is, it's got some amendments, and it also covers the building code, plumbing code, gas code, residential code, the 2009 energy code, mechanical code, and then electrical code. Of course, the state of Tennessee will be doing our electrical inspections, and so, but we put it in the 2011 because that's what the state is at right now, and it's always lying up. And so that's what this particular ordinance is, is to bring us up to within a seven-year period that we're supposed to be brought up into. So I'm going to make a motion that we pass this ordinance to pertaining to the building codes.
Do you have an attachment to our energy code? Do we have some type of attachment here in the shop? We don't?
I've got, I've got a resolution that's going to come up to pertaining to the energy code.
Because, and there's a calculation that must be done on merchant buildings, it's called COM check, and it gives you the option, either going through 2012 energy code, or another code, but I can't even tell you what it is, but it's a little bit more friendly to the people spending the money.
That's why we're going to the 2009 energy code, because 2012 is, is way out there. Matter of fact, there's, I don't know with the community out here that's actually going to the 2012. I know the state might want to do it either. So, we're just going to go to the 2009 version of it. Trying to kind of outnumber differences and the problems that's with that 2012.
We have a motion on the table, Alderman Harris, I'll say. All in favor, say aye. Our motion's carried. Going to ordinance 2016, 104, this is Title 7 Fire Protection. Basically what the fire.
Yeah, this is all part of the same, no reason why we got two different ordinances because it's in a different title, and so we created separate ordinance due to it being in a different title, within our code books.
This requires two readings. This will be the first reading on March 15, 2016, and I'll tell the phone chair in the next meeting. Want to make a motion, go ahead?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to go ahead and adopt the 2012 edition of the International Fire Code.
This being ordinance 2016, 104, I'll say. All in favor, say aye. Next, we go to Resolution 16 dash 02. This is a resolution to exempt the city of Ridgeline, Tennessee from how for statewide building destruction safety standards in one family, two family, whether it's within its jurisdiction.
This is a resolution as part of the energy code that brings us back down to the 2009 energy code. The fire marshal is requiring that if we do not send this in, that we have to abide by the 2012 energy code. And as we discussed just a minute ago, in my opinion, the 2012 is a joke. And so I'm going to make the motion to go ahead and approve this resolution of the central fire, or the fire marshal.
Motion on the table, Resolution number 16 dash 02, I'll say. All in favor, say aye. No opposition. Next thing I'm going to do is a workshop.
Can I have people be 18, 6:30 or 7:00?
13 on 6:30, at 6:00.
And I apologize for not making it last. I wish I would have been here. It would stop some confusion.
Was that Monday, you said?
Yeah.
I was at a hard time making out Monday or Thursday. April 18, 6:30. April 18, 630. My motion to that, 16-630. Hold the floor for citizens' comments. Anybody have anything to say? Steve?
Stephen Harper, 106, Hidden Meadows Court. When was the last time we had our, we're talking about getting things, okay. When was the last time we had our relucible code updated? I'm just curious.
It's been in the last two years.
Has it been that recent?
Because we've copied all the ordinances for this year to get ready to send them to them.
Oh, okay. All right.
Hopefully this past year, this year.
In 2012, I'll call.
Wait, sir.
Where we stand on our signs being replaced, the Red Stop signs.
I haven't heard anything about it personally. To be honest, we haven't checked into it, so.
We've been paid for one and the other one is still up for payment.
Is there litigation?
They, both, both ends got run over?
Two separate.
Same person?
Actually, I mean, that's been a year since that girl, the one, who wanted to make payments and she hadn't made any attempt. I mean, she could have been paying us over the past year for the sign and she hadn't done anything. What, what can we do with that?
She's been court ordered. We can go back and get a warrant issue for her. Just like with DUIs, what they make them pay me to, it's hard to get it out of.
I mean, do we want to get some bids on some new signs or?
I'd ask, last time this one was stored, I'd ask Donna Goff to look at it, give us a figure, because I think she did that one.
Well, they, he was gonna try to match them, but they're off gone now, so.
Easy job.
I know you got to get bids on it, but he's the one that built those, too, and my, my opinion, I'd like to get a bid for him for sure, because he knows how to match them up.
Don't let him get a garden riddle wrong.
Donna gave a bid of $1,500 and.
Oh, he did?
Yes. And he was gonna, he was gonna do landscaping. I think the sign was 1,200, and some landscaping and moles was $300. I thought we approved him to go ahead and do that, and there's been no action taken on it, so at this point, I think we need to move forward, try to find somebody else.
Oh, okay.
They need to go back up. I mean, they've looked nice for years and I don't know.
I think the second accident probably threw him off. He thought, oh, no, I got it too. I don't know who, I guess, who builds those stop signs. I don't.
Was Allison still building them?
I'm sure.
Is that any of those still?
I mean, I know they're still there. I, I assume they still build those stop signs.
Sandblasted?
Yeah.
You know, red blue?
Well, if we make any touch base with Donna, then we'll talk to Allison's signs.
Most of the sign truckers got to go to the land for a while. Johnson may be able, I don't know. I know I did. I know, I know Allison personal, you do, because I would ask him, maybe get a couple of bids on it. We, Donna's hard to get in touch with because he's out of town a lot.
So one of y'all are gonna get in touch with Allison for next month so we can get something done?
Somebody try to get in touch with Donna, it could be the next day. I don't know, I'd like to get in touch with her.
Well, is the insurance gonna pay for the second one?
We've already been paid for the one.
Do we, do we have a photograph of the sign that was out then, then we can do it, that we showed to the sign companies for?
It's on your website, isn't it?
Please don't.
Okay, any other citizens' comments? Okay. I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
I'll say it.
Call if you ever say aye.
Aye.
Thank you everyone for coming.